All right. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order.
Welcome, everyone, to Orlando Sports City Council Meeting. It is Thursday, October seventeenth. Train to the two-third floor. Please rise for the invocation.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'll call them in order.
Welcome, everyone, to Orlando Sports City Council Meeting. It is Thursday, October seventeenth. Train to the two-third floor. Please rise for the invocation.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'll call them in order.
Please rise for the invitation.
All right.
How long do we have to repeat the first two minutes of this meeting? This is significantly worse than ground talk.
So should I sit down now? I'm committed to standing up. I'm just, I'm waiting. We're praying and then we're gonna move. Yeah.
My favorite technique.
We're good? All right. All right. Lord, aside from technical challenges, grant us wisdom to discern what is right, courage to act on our convictions, and strength to stand firm in the face of opposition. Mayor decisions serve the greater good, not merely popular will. Guide us to be just and fair in all our deliberations. Help us to listen with open minds and compassionate hearts. It remains steadfast in pursuit of truth and justice. Let our actions today reflect our highest ideals, and may we lead by example in service to our community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item three approval, city council meeting minutes from October third, two thousand twenty-four. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Any comments, questions related to the minutes? Here you can see none, Mrs. Frank on item three.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Palisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes. Motion passes six zero. Item four, limited courtesy for we've had no requests. We'll jump to item nine, please, Mrs. For our Erdel Associates, three twenty-one, Second Street subdivision. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Mr. Nar will welcome you to the podium and we'll knock out seven and then I'll fill everybody in on eight.
Good evening, Vice President Yoder and Vice President Bider, members of council. What we present to you tonight from Erdel Associates is a one lot subdivision. It is located in the MH zoning, I mean zoning district. Lot number one will contain two twenty-five thousand eight hundred and fourteen square feet. It will be added to parcel six five zero zero six one hundred, which is owned by Stamen's and the residual to contain thirty-four thousand four hundred and fourteen square feet. It was reviewed by both planning and it was also before the zoning hearing board for setback variance. As it does not meet the side yard setbacks of ten feet in the MH zoning district. So it did go before zoning. It did get zoning hearing board approval. It was viewed by both county and planning. Basically, what this is doing is obviously Erdel Associates use that. It's a fuel island system. They will no longer utilize that. So it is currently being used by Stamen. So they are basically subdividing that and having Stamen purchase that area for their continued use. And again, it was reviewed by county. Under the county comments, it went through the zoning hearing board, and I can answer any questions this time.
Thank you, Mr. Nar. Any comments or questions for members? Okay. Here you can see none, Mrs. Franklin, item nine.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Palisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes. Motion passes six zero. We'll jump to item seven, Mrs. Frank.
A resolution acknowledging and agreeing to assignment of certain radio tower assets.
Is there a motion in a second?
So move.
Again, Mr. Nar.
What we have for you tonight is a resolution regarding a transfer of licensing from iHeart Communications, which is located up on West Fourth Street next to Elm Park. As part of a requirement, anytime a licensing agreement goes before the communication system, it obviously has to get a blessing from the municipality it serves. Basically, what you're seeing is the licensing of tower access will be merged with Vertical Bridge. And I do have a representative here to answer any questions. This is just kind of a formality because the license is being transferred and there's a merger.
Thank you, Mr. Nar. Any comments or questions on the resolution from members? Ms. Mealy.
Um, so iHeart will continue to utilize the tower? Is that how I'm reading this resolution?
I believe, I believe.
I can respond to that.
Go ahead.
Sure. Oh, okay. I'm Maureen Goniema. I'm in-house counsel for iHeart Media. And yes, iHeart will continue to be a tenant on the tower. It's really the tower will just be owned by Vertical Bridge, and Vertical Bridge is a tower operating company. They own towers throughout the United States. They're a very reputable company that owns and maintains towers, but iHeart will still be operating on the tower.
Okay, got it. And right, so Vertical Bridge is a reputable company that will maintain the tower well, et cetera, et cetera. No change in our requirements.
Mr. Bider.
This is the, this is the tower that's located on the, around Elm Park.
Correct.
Okay. And that's the, not the transmitter in the back, the circular one that's.
It's the actual tower.
The actual tower. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Allison.
There's just one typo in here. I don't, I don't think it's probably essential, but I think it's the third paragraph down. It's because that's, it's the first one I looked at. It said vertical bride. Which is not just juxtaposition of words, but.
Well, you hope the bride's vertical, at least for.
I don't know if that is correct.
It should be bridge.
Yeah, it says vertical bridge everywhere else in the resolution. There's one place where a G is missing, so.
Austin, you want us to amend the verbiage or? Okay.
Okay.
Good. Okay. Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right. Here you can see none, Mrs. Franklin, item seven.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Palisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes. Motion passes six zero. Then real quick on item eight, JMD asked us to hold off on this so they could be here for the next meeting. They just happened to have to go out of town, I believe. So I think we can just leave it on the agenda. I mean, I'll ask for a motion in a second, but if not, we can just reintroduce it at the next meeting. And I don't see one, so.
In addition, at the next meeting, if you want to keep those packets, the only thing that I'm going to add to it is I've now been provided some elevations of what the building will look like. And I'll send that out for the next meeting.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, we'll jump up to item five. We have a presentation for Retire US. Mayor Slaughter is online along with the presenters. Mayor Slaughter, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Yoder, Vice President Bider. Yeah, what is not before you, but a presentation. This company approached the city, spoke with myself and Cynthia Hart. A little while ago, we discussed it with Austin White, a listener, and he said it was and we thought it'd be a good idea to do a presentation first. It's, I'm not gonna obviously steal their presentation, but just basically would a service that potentially could be used if we decide to move forward with it by city employees related to their finances and retirement and things of that nature. So we thought it was a good idea before we put any resolution or anything before city council to basically just give an overview and see if this is something that we, that city council administration would be interested in exploring. So with that, I know there are folks from Retire US online and I'll turn it over to them now for their presentation.
Hello there. Thank you. I was trying to turn on the video for us here, but it looks like that is disabled. I am sending a request here for able to grab the screen chair as well. And thank you guys for your time. My name is Michael Scarpatty. I am the director of our corporate partnerships here with Retire US. And today we wanted to kind of walk you through the program as a whole.
Hey, real, real, before you, before you get started, can you send us a copy of the presentation? Because we don't see it on the TVs or anything like that, so. And that's fine. I mean, you can listen in, but a copy that after the fact would be very useful to us.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, copy after the fact. Would you, will you guys be able to see my screen if I share?
No. I mean, our Chris can, our AV person, but we, we are, so. But it actually would be beneficial. Just go through it because it'll be on the live stream and on the recording and
Okay.
That'll be another resource for us to go back to.
Sure. Okay, perfect. And so why don't we get started? So Retire US is a comprehensive financial wellness program. And this is meant to supplement the existing benefits that you offer the employees of the city of Williamsport. And it's, this really came out of this post pandemic shift. So after the pandemic, we see a lot of data where ninety-two percent of employees are reporting that they're stressed about the economic uncertainty. Seventy-four percent are seeking assistance when facing financial decisions. Sixty-three actually expect their employer to help them achieve financial security. And as a result, fifty-four percent of employees say financial wellness is the number one most desired benefit. So we, we did some digging into it. Why is that? What is the case? What's driving this, this need for financial wellness? And it comes down to a couple of things. It's literacy. Sixty-three percent, the average test score for US adult who took a basic financial literacy test. So there's just some gaps here on education, understanding of not only how to prepare for the future, but why certain components of our finances are important. The second is retirement planning down here in the bottom corner here. Twenty-seven percent of confidence of workers feel very confident in their ability to retire. So over seventy percent of people, even though we have traditional retirement plans and resources around retirement, there's, there's a gap in confidence around actually being able to plan for, you know, those big life milestones from the, from the finances. And what a financial wellness program does, it brings to the forefront some, some other layers to the, the benefit offerings for the employees. And really, you're looking to accomplish really six core functions. It's enhancing financial literacy. It's improving financial behavior, supporting financial stability. It's reducing financial stress, encouraging smart financial decisions, and ultimately cultivating financial freedom. And Retire US is a platform that is designed to put the user, the employee, in the middle of advisors, analysis, tracking, education, support, and messaging with a team of financial professionals and guides to really make it easy for you to understand your financial needs, develop strong financial habits, and ultimately manage your finances like a professional. As a result of the platform, we've been featured in numerous publications across the nation. Most recently, managed HR magazine named us a top ten corporate benefit for two thousand twenty-four. And so really, the way the platform works is we've simplified this journey towards wealth mastery, we call it. And it covers the six key milestones. And the real focus is starting on this current financial situation. And financial wellness is all about the now and how we're navigating our financial stressors, understanding the red flags that are in our way, and ultimately making conscious decisions that help cultivate financial security, stability, and ultimately financial freedom. And here's essentially our approach. Here's how we do it. So there's basically five tiers of, of our approach. It's financial education. It's integrated tools and resources. It's personalized access to independent experts, organizational reporting and insights, and then full service benefit management. And the way this essentially comes together is through the platform. So I can kind of just show you a high level view from Yakima County, which is another county that we're in the process of partnering with. And basically what the Retire US dashboard does, it, it brings you a place, it's an ecosystem that connects you with all these tools, these resources, and then these independent financial experts. So you see to the right here, our wellness path for financial mindfulness, this first tier current situation. Once we complete our financial checkpoint, this is about a four to five minute multiple choice quiz. We get a baseline assessment here of our retirement pacing, our tax planning, our risk of failure. And it drops these different red flags that you see here at the bottom here. So red flags are kind of the blind spots. These are the financial areas that should be further evaluated. And the platform connects you with an independent expert that you can meet with for up to an hour. Your spouse is also included in this benefit to talk through systems and strategies that can be put in place to remove these red flags and leverage the employee benefits that you have access to in addition to outside accounts that you have. So we're not only speaking to just the resources inside the, the county or the city. It's, it's everything that has the, that the employee has access to. And it's helping put systems in place to really remove these red flags and cultivate their financial freedom. There's also big levels of, of literacy and access here to just build our financial knowledge. So this resource library is here. These are curated pieces of content, guides from industry experts that your employees are able to use as reference guides as they want to start getting things a little bit more clarified for their financial situation. And then this on demand, we call it the Netflix of financial wellness, this on demand module. So the do it yourselfers, they have access to these little bite sized modules, here fifteen minutes, five minute modules on how to prioritize your cash flow, how to spend versus borrowing, making those decisions, refinancing a home or how to pay down debt. So a lot of different modules depending on, you know, where the person is in their journey. And there's about forty, forty yourself that they can go through at their own pace. And then our wellness toolkit. So our wellness toolkit down here that you see, it just offers additional layers of tools and analysis. One of the, the most popular features we have in that wellness toolkit right now, we call it a portfolio of deep scan. And it actually helps you understand what would happen to your investments if the stock market were to crash, which right now is a obviously a very hot, hot topic with what we've seen in investment markets. So what the Retire US platform is here to do is help your employees really feel empowered in their financial decisions and really cultivate a handful of things for the, for the employee, but on the organizational side of things, what we're really looking to help you support is productivity within the workforce, right? On average, employees spend three hours and more per week distracted at work because of financial stressors. So we're looking to help solve some of those productivity issues that you see, employee retention, right? Giving people a little more understanding and more support. Benefits increases, right? This is a financial wellness program. So it's in addition. Eighty percent of employees say that they would, they would actually choose additional benefits over pay raises. And this helps attract talent, create a healthier workforce, and ultimately provide better corporate culture. So that's the platform. We partner in a number of ways, the ways that we've discussed with Mayor Slaughter and the rest of the team have to do with no cost option right now for the first year, where we allow you to test pilot the program and the resources. And then at the six month mark, we make a decision of, of how we would like to potentially continue the partnership moving forward and talk about how various features and budget can be, you know, allocated to make the program more robust and, and give you guys more resources. But right now, the proposal is to add financial wellness to the employee base as a benefit. No cost out of pocket for the first year and the employees will get access to not only the platform, the education, live workshops, but also access to meet one-to-one with independent financial professionals to help resolve any areas within their current financial situation. with independent financial professionals to help resolve any areas within their current financial situation.
There's a delay. Okay, I got you. Okay. Um. Thank you. Thank you for that. Oh, yeah, there. Wow, that is a really bad delay. I just saw it go off. Wow. Um, thank you for that. I I really appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions for Retire U S following the presentation and anything that stuck out? Mr. Pelisi.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for taking the time to bring this presentation to us. I appreciate it. Um, I'm just curious. So what you were looking at is that the cost to the city would be zero dollars for the first year. And then how much would it cost the city after the first year and subsequently the, you know, the years after? What's that? What's that billing structure look like?
So, great question. And I think there you mentioned there may be a little bit of delay, so we'll we'll work with this as best as we can. The there's a couple of different ways that we partner and the the proposal that we have would would cost the city five thousand dollars moving forward to maintain the level of financial, independent financial professional guidance for all of the employees. There are other partnership tiers that we offer that can expand on more connectivity and advisor services for the employees. But right now, we we just landed on basically, we we call it a basic financial wellness partner. So there's opportunity to expand services, but for right now, the services would continue for only five thousand.
Okay, can you can you elaborate just a little bit? Say, I'm the city. What does five thousand dollars get me? Does that get me ten hours of one on ones Zoom call time with you guys, helping me with my strategy? Is there a cap on the number of employees that it services? What does that look like?
Great question. So this was built off of the employee count that you have. And what that does, it gets everybody access, every single employee in the county has access to a thirty minute financial wellness review meeting is what we call it with an independent expert. Now, is everyone going to use it? That's not that's not going to be the case. Generally, we're targeting anywhere from forty to sixty percent in total usage across the county. And they get access to the live workshops. We do one a quarter with the independent certified financial planners. The platform tools and resources, there's unlimited access to the MyBlocks, the on demand modules, as well as the resources and toolkit. So everybody has access to that thirty minute financial wellness review at that tier. And that's able to be expanded to an hour if you wanted to. That's that's able to be expanded to covering areas outside of the current financial situation, right? Current financial situation is really what that thirty minutes is focused on. It's financial stressors, it's red flags, it's benefits that you have access to through the workplace and things that you're doing outside of the workplace. You can add into that if if you would prefer, and this generally we we build on these programs over time with our our partners. But you can add risk and insurance, short term savings, retirement planning, tax diversification, estate planning. There's a bunch of other things that these advisors can focus on with the employees. The this this gives them the current situation, their current financial situation and thirty minute financial wellness review meetings across the entire employee base.
Okay, thank you very much for elaborating upon that and explaining it.
Sure, my pleasure.
I have no more questions.
Anybody else have any? Questions for Retire U S? Okay. Uh. Oh.
I think it must have been the lag because I turned it off a minute ago.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Um. All right, not seeing any other questions. What we we appreciate you you being here and kind of walking us through the offering from a high level. Um.
I'd rather see the packet.
Yeah, yeah, no, if 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 there was any presentation packet documentation that you have that you went through, you can send us. Please let us. And, you know, I I'm sure that will spur probably some additional questions and and we can circle back and and deliver those as they come up, but definitely some food for thought, I think, we'll take into consideration as we get into budget. So thank you very much. Mayor Slaughter, thank you for bringing it as well.
Thank you, guys. Much appreciated.
No, vice versa. Have a great night. We appreciate it. Okay, we will jump to item six, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing a contract between the Williamsburg Bureau of Police and Ryanair Productions.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Second, Assistant Chief Bolt. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, President Yoder, Vice President Bider, members of council. Uh, this is simply a resolution authorizing a contract between the Williamsburg Bureau of Police and Ryanair Productions. Um, we're going to enter into a film contract with them, uh, which is Ignite Business Services, three twenty nine Pine Street, uh, Suite three hundred, Williamsburg, P A, uh, to produce promotional recruitment videos for the Bureau of Police. Uh, cost of this production will be five thousand five hundred dollars. And the cost from this comes totally from our grant that we were awarded through P C C D. Um, we have money set aside for recruitment and retention, and this is one of the projects that we would like to to utilize that for. And I'll open it up to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Assistant Chief Bolt. Any any questions? Mr. Pelisi.
Sir.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Evening, yeah.
Um. Chief, did did we put this out for R F P or anything like that?
No, um, this is because this is going to be more of an artistic uh, type of assignment. Um, plus, it's going to be somebody who's going to have access to officers during training in special sensitive areas. And we also have a relationship where she's done some of these things before for her own production company. We felt confident that we'd be all right to do this, uh, just with her. It it was just going to be a much easier fit, having seen what the final product's going to be already.
Okay, so the the Ignite Services, they've done these kinds of things before?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And Ryan, we've worked with her a number of times. She is also part of, uh, uh, she has her own production company also locally, which does like a news magazine program. And she's done several, On the Pulse, thank you. And she's done several articles uh, with both the school district, uh, the Bureau of Police, uh, for her program as well. And we have a decent uh, relationship and we've seen the end product. And she's already done some proofs for us that are extremely well done. So we're very confident.
Thank you, chief. Good to hear. I have no more questions.
Any other questions from members?
Not Mr. Mackey. Not questions. I'll I'll just second Assistant Chief Bolt. Um, I know Ann and she does amazing work. So I'm I have no doubt that this video will be top notch, so.
Yeah, I was I was second. She does great work. Um, you know, I I she's going to give us really good quality and 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 everything. So and to your point, Assistant Chief, I think she's already familiar with us. Um, so it should be pretty seamless. So exciting stuff. It's good to see.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, here you can see none. Mrs. Frank on item six, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Um, we'll jump to item ten, certificates of appropriateness from Historic Architectural Review. Um, two items, one from Enrique Castillo, three twenty four Walnut Street. Um, and then item two, Richard and Sarah Miravito, four or five Wethsford Street. Um, is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second, motion in a second. Um, any comments or questions on the certificates of appropriateness? Hearing see none, Mrs. Frank on item ten.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Mr. Yoder. They said, uh, they said, Bider, sorry. Yes.
And then Mr. Yoder.
You're good.
Yes, I'm so sorry. I'm so confused right now. My bad. Uh, motion passes six zero, I think.
Six or seven.
Six or seven, somewhere in there, right? Um, item eleven, except for filing finance meeting minutes from March twenty eighth, um, June, June eighteenth and July ninth, two thousand twenty four, controllers report for July two thousand twenty four. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the documentation we're accepting for filing? Here you can see none. Mrs. Frank on item eleven.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Item twelve, announcements. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be Thursday, November seventh, seven P M. Here in Trade and Transit, two third floor. Upcoming meetings, October twenty second, Tuesday, eleven thirty A M. Is redevelopment authority. Tuesday, November fifth, eleven thirty A M. Public safety, one P M. Finance, two thirty P M. Public Works. Wednesday, November sixth, nine A M. Economic revitalization. Thursday, November seventh, seven P M. Is our next city council meeting. Um, I'll announce before we go into comments. Um, we did have an executive session last Thursday, the that be the tenth, um, related to matters with personnel. Um, and then I'll open that up for comments from members of city council. Um, I think might be wise to maybe talk about the idea of um, a special meeting to start some final reallocations for rescue plan funding. I know, um, uh, the mayor, um, has been working through compiling a number of, um, data points related to some different options that are out there. We've we've gotten some hard data on a lot of them. Um, I'm expecting to get some final data for, um, Old City, um, tomorrow. Um, and so I think, you know, as of tomorrow, we can probably do a special meeting as early as people were comfortable and interested to start moving the final money around. Um, I think we can do as early as next Thursday for advertising and everything. Um, and that would kind of fit the normal, I think, two week gap between meetings. If 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 that fits people's schedules, we could also consider you know, a couple of weeks after the November seventh meeting, um, as well. Um, just if we're, I'm I'm trying to recall, Austin, can you remind me of the between reading advertising requirements or length between? I'm struggling to remember that off the top of my head. That's why I mentioned that.
Janice believes it's forty eight hours.
Okay, so we could do a we could do week to week after week.
Or you're you mean as far as.
So like, we could do, we could do first reading on, like, if we did first reading today, we could do a second reading of an ordinance, moving money around the week after. That's that's what I'm trying to understand.
Well, I can tell you that, you know, we need twenty four hours notice of a special meeting as far as advertising.
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, between readings.
Yeah, no, I, that's what I'm.
Oh, I got you.
I guess I was starting with what I didn't do off the top of my head.
Sorry, my bad. For whatever reason, I thought there was a window between readings, and I can't remember what that is. That's why I'm asking that question.
I think it's be, I think it's actually, it's not between readings. I think it's after pu- after publishing, because we have for an order, you're talking about an ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah.
Talk about transfer ordinance of of mon- of money.
Yeah, but also, you know, depending on where the money's coming from, it may not require a transfer ordinance. If it's ARPA, is that what you're doing? Okay.
Yes. It's rescue plan, yes. Yes. That's John, that's where that came from. I I can't remember what that is. So.
Well, if we can do the twenty fourth, then I say we need to do the twenty fourth, because then we can do second reading on the seventh, yeah. I don't want to go on late into the December on this. So. It's twenty fourth is legal and everybody's okay. Well, four of us are okay to do the twenty fourth. I mean, let, no, I mean, this is where we're at right now.
Yeah, I I'm good with that day.
Yeah.
Too, so.
The twenty fourth at seven P M.
A week from today. Yeah.
And what are we hoping to accomplish, John? We're hoping to actually lay out precisely how we're spending this money by next Thursday.
Yeah, and first reading, right? So that we can finalize everything on the seventh.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
And and again, I think the last piece of data related to Old City, I'm expecting to get tomorrow. So that would, I think, if 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 that amount of time between Friday and a week from today is enough time to kind of digest that all, I think.
It has to be.
So.
You know, we would want to just make sure that this room's available.
This, I I know this room's available next Thursday, but if there's other dates, we would check that tomorrow.
Nope, I get it. Gary's back there pointing and making sure that we know, so.
What's that? Yes, no, I know. I know.
We may need to find somebody that can fulfill.
Yeah, you were my next question. You're you're not available next Thursday? Okay. Okay, good luck with that. We'll have to reach out to Chris Black and see if he can cover it. Um. Okay.
We can make it happen.
Yeah, we can make something happen. That's fine. Okay, so a week from today, the twenty fourth, I think, is that date? Does that seem to work for the group?
Good for me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so Janice, I think tomorrow, um, when you come in, if you don't mind tying off with R V T A about the room, I think if that fits, I think we can advertise um, seven P M. Nor our our normal time, does that work for everybody?
Okay. All right.
It works. Cool. Um. Any other comments from members of council? Mr. Mackey.
Not a comment, a question. I don't know. Gary's maybe the only one here that can answer this. Do we know when leaf collection starts? I mean, the leaves are falling already, but.
It has started.
It started already?
Started, yeah. Start, if it hasn't, it will be.
Okay.
I saw you, I saw you second.
All right, great.
Yeah, I think so at the beginning.
Well, there you go. For anybody watching, Leaf Collection has started.
Three. Uh, Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Three days.
So that.
So at least three days have to intervene between a a ordinance's introduction and its final passage.
Okay, yeah, so we're more than covered. Yeah, that works. Cool. All right. Any other comments for members of council?
Well.
We'll figure it out.
We'll figure something out. Okay. Um, any comments for members of the administration? Any comment? Any comments from the public? All right, I'll take a motion in a second for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.